That's what high B is good.
Oh, he's getting Pfizer because Sanford can only get with.
Yeah, they can get Pfizer, but he's telling, he told me that he said last week, Lewis Drugs, two weeks ago, they got like 200 notices and when they got the 200 notices, they ended up and only got 86 of them done. They had the other ones left over. And so he said, they're all organization. They never got deployment set up or what? He didn't know. So Lewis Drugs said they didn't want anymore for a while. So we, but he, like he said, we're sitting there with those other still them ones there. I haven't used them up and he said, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's, that's.
Bad organization.
Well, that's bad.
Well, then don't, yeah, right. Did you see Minnesota?
You ready? You got it recording?
They probably did their part.
Want to call the meeting to order? We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Muckler.
Here.
Packard.
You're mute. You're muted, Phyllis.
Okay. Sorry.
All right, Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Approve agenda if we can add in discussion part, open meeting rules.
I move to approve the agenda with adding the open meeting rules. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, motion passes. Approve minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, motion passes. Any visitors to be heard that aren't on the agenda?
I'd like to speak.
One second.
Dan.
Could you have them go to the mic?
You gotta go to a mic, Dan. You want to turn it on?
Does that work?
The button's gotta be up.
When the button's up, it's on. There you go.
Okay. I'm Dan Christopherson with the Clay County Historical Society. I'm president of that group and I realize you may be covering this later, but this is less than a minute. And I just wanted to give you our thoughts on it. We, we as a group care very deeply about this building. And we request that it be rehabbed and restored to a functional, safe and enjoyable workplace for our county employees. And that it remains the center of Clay County government for our taxpayers. This is a handsome, historic and well-constructed space that is in dire need of updates, maintenance and possible expansion at this current site. We at the Clay County Historical Society welcome the opportunity to work together with you to save this wonderful historic treasure for future generations. Sharing of complete information with the public will be key to moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Tom?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm, I'm getting older, but I learned how to unmute pretty, pretty well. Sorry, fellows. I don't mean that as a pointing at you because you were, you were unmuted. You were muted. All right, listen, I, I want to keep this short. I, I want to first and foremost say thank you for this opportunity. I know I've faced this before on the city level. So I want to say, no, I want to say I'm speaking in my personal opinion here. And there's no question, we need a new law enforcement center and jail facility. And I believe that could easily and should be treated as, as a separate option. For those who don't know, my name is Tom Sorenson. My roots in Clay County are very deep on both sides of my family as grandson of Lloyd Holmes of Meckling, Mamie Dean Holmes of Gayville on my mother's side, and as the family of immigrants from Denmark directly to Clay County. Christopherson Sorenson and Anna Marie Nielsen Sorenson of the Alborg region of Denmark. This grandfather's sister had come to Clay County earlier than the rest and resided in farm between Bergen Lutheran Church and Myron Grove, you know, High Line and not far from the upper upriver point of Jake's Island, also known as Goat Island. I want you to know that I have a real historic sense of our county. Currently, I am a member of the Board of the Clay County Historical Society of which Dan is president. I also chair the Clay County Historic Preservation Commission. However, my remarks again are my own opinion and I'm not here as a spokesperson for those two fine organizations. So thank you again kindly for this time and opportunity. And I know in serving public office and as an educator and as an actual journalist years ago, I learned and witnessed and covered important aspects of our public jobs. It takes leadership to make decisions for the people and it takes input from all of us to reach them. In our positions of leadership, there comes a time when the right thing is obvious. Sometimes it is not. Leaders are elected to be objective, fair, research, try hard to do the right thing. And access to knowledge of which the general public may be unaware sometimes happens. And for the good, good reasons, there are times to decide contrary to what the quote, popular sentiment of a group of constituents might be even after gathering so much information. So some decisions may or may not be tied to popularity, but they're often arising from what leaders have responsibly sought and learned. So thank you, all of you commissioners for your hard work in researching, contemplating and reaching decisions, great and small and timely. And as you know, the people sometimes reach the ultimate decision. The committee you have named to work so hard for us to study this important landmark's future in adequately serving our citizens also deserves a great deal of gratitude. Thank you all for doing your best to fairly and objectively provide our commissioners and our voters with a few options to consider and to take a public vote. Your work is important to Clay County's history and services and history of our services. Conveying your options to the whole county has been at times, as we know, difficult. Maybe you haven't seen it that way, but some of us have, but especially for those having little or no access to the internet and the, the popular services found there. Sometimes they're not quite accurate. Unless it came directly from you, such as your webpage and places like that. So historically, again, in my personal opinion, as a longtime surrogate for the public with major regional media back in the past, Clay County sometimes suffers from a lack of official information and hears too much partisan noise. Historically, there seems to be a lack of media watchdog in government like radio, competing newspapers, television and others as existed in past decades. Local news, I can tell you, is, and a healthy skepticism without being too critical is extremely important to, to our democracy. Thinking critically as we teach our students is difficult without reliable facts. Maybe information still exists through the old read it in the official published minutes in our newspaper. Sometimes it's simply a transcript of the words that were said. But what was the mood and temperament of the room or the questions seeking answers? So I learned working for a really great leader, her name was Sylvia Henkin, that one does not argue with a company that buys its ink in barrels. In radio, we always had control of the microphones, but I, I don't trust Facebook at all. That's a personal opinion. Our handsome historic courthouse serves as more than just another old building among others in this historic town. Our history in this county is rich in so very many ways. We are at a point when replacement for what in the past both burned and was subject to floodwaters forced our county community to look to the future with the opportunity to construct a wonderful respectable, solid as a rock courthouse uptown. The historic cornerstone was laid by people in the community from a lodge born more than 150 years ago. You've seen the photos. Our masons took much pride in the important participation in dedicating this structure. So our courthouse is symbolic. It's much like a capital, whether in Pierre or Washington DC. It is meant to stand and be kept and admired in some form. There's a variety of options to turn to, which may or may not agree with the committee or perhaps some of you. But please do not forget the strong symbolism of our government seated locally in Vermilion. Another of our French-derived historic names rooted in what the Yankton Sioux welcomed us after the treaty of 1858. They called it the Valley of the Paint or Wassauwakpa. Those early Europeans traveling up the superhighway of the day, the Mighty Mo, the longest river in these United States, shortened this historically artistic name to a French term for a rich reddish color, Vermilion. Please make a covenant with our people as the current owners and as signal of your leadership in protecting the future existence of this iconic courthouse. Please press your cultural sensitivity, sending a clear message of historic importance and add to our property's title of ownership, a covenant, a promise, which will attach and travel with it to protect this as the historic building it should remain. Show us that you really care for the future of our courthouse. You will be honored and thanked now and in the future in the minutes and records available to posterity as the true leaders you are for all the people. Thank you kindly.
Are there any of the other, other visitors to be heard?
Morning. I'm Jerry Wilson. I agree with everything that Dan and Tom said, but I want to talk about this from a little different perspective. I am one of those few small print nerds who always reads the official notices and, and you know, the minutes of meetings and so on. One of the really big problems we have here in Clay County is the lack of an active news media, as you're all aware. Witnessed the fact that there is no reporter covering this meeting today. There was no notice in last week's paper that an important topic was going to be on the agenda. The public is very ill-informed in Clay County. Only by reading those small print items and sometimes interpreting them can one be aware of what's, what's up. That being said, it's extremely important that the elected officials of the county do everything possible to stay in touch with the public they serve. And that's one of the reasons that I'm very happy that you have seen the wisdom of recording the sessions and making them available to the public. I applaud that. But given this, this dearth of information, it seems to me extremely important that the public be actively engaged in this discussion. It's been maybe, I don't know, it's been somewhere between one and two years, I think, since I first heard by the grapevine that there was discussion of relocating or rebuilding, revamping, whatever, addressing the issues of the courthouse and the public services, public safety center. Having once served on the county commission, I got my tour of the jail. That was 12 years ago. And it was atrocious then. It's atrocious today. I think everybody seems to agree that we need a new jail, that we need to somehow expand, add on or something. What I've never understood and never heard explained is why this means that we should even consider abandoning the courthouse. As you know, the county owns land where expansion could occur on this block or to the north. I've never heard any rational explanation of why that isn't an active consideration to build a new jail in the parking lot over there that's rarely used. We need a new jail. I don't think we need a new courthouse. It's always expensive to maintain, to repair. But I cannot imagine that if the citizens are asked to pass a large bond issue to pay for a new, totally new facility away from downtown and abandon this historic, beautiful, structurally sound building, that they would go for it. I wouldn't. I don't think anybody else that I know would. So I think what you need to do at this late point in this process is to actively engage the public. I think it was wise to put out the questionnaire and I hope a lot of people responded to that. And I haven't seen the results, so I don't know what those who responded are thinking. But what I would like to see happen now is what I think should have happened at the very beginning. And I know that COVID is a factor here and it has been, it has made this process much more difficult as, as everything else. But what I think we need is a, an open, well-advertised public meeting where what is known thus far can be objectively presented. And then the people would have a chance to ask questions, to respond, to discuss, to debate. If you begin by getting the input of the citizens, I think it's much more likely that whatever decision you finally present to them in the form of a bond issue will be accepted. So that's basically what I think is put the people at the beginning of this process. Ask them, give them objective information and ask them how they want to proceed. My personal view is that this building should be preserved and enhanced in whatever ways are necessary. I know there's, there are problems with wiring and plumbing. I don't understand why it's not possible to run conduits through ceilings or boxed at ceiling level and deal with those issues. I know you've got to have a good roof. I've heard that windows are a problem. That's not an immediate pressing concern. I know those windows leak a little bit, but this could be a gradual process over a period of years to do the repairs and maintenance necessary to preserve this courthouse as it is. The immediate problem is the public safety center and the jail. And I think that should be built on property here that, that we own. That's a kind of uninformed opinion, but the, the overall view is involve the public and save the building. Thank you.
Any other visitors to be heard?
How's this? I am Constance Kruger. I'm new to Vermilion, but bold to Vermilion. I lived during the 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s. My dad was the Bell Telephone manager for many, many years. In fact, when we first came here, we had the operators and you had to call in to get your number. So I, I have moved back here and I'm very loyal and committed to Vermilion. One of the saddest things for me was when they tore down our Vermilion High School. And at the time I thought, you know, I didn't know anything about it. Why didn't I get involved? And so I guess this is my chance. And I did want to say, I filled out the survey, but it seemed to me like I didn't have the ability to really talk about saving the courthouse. And after I submitted it, I was kind of frustrated. So maybe take a look at that survey, do another one. And then I also, how much, how much investment into grant?
Did we freeze?
Yeah, this is Lane. I think they froze again in the.
Yep.
In the commission room.
Good morning, Lane.
Good morning. I'll text Carrie real quick.
Okay.
Okay. Can you hear us now, Phyllis?
Yep, can.
We're back.
And Tom, it's not just Phyllis. There's a number of us out here.
If you guys are watching the YouTube one afterwards and you happen to see something like this, you go, what they do? That don't want us to know what's going on? That's not the case, people. It's because this is what happens. Yeah, I've just got to, you know, if you pass that along to other people, I appreciate it.
Are there any other visitors to be heard?
Yes, I'm Norma Wilson and I'd just like to say that it's a big undertaking, you know, deciding what to do. And I think that, you know, yes, it's good to invite the whole community to come in and give some input. But one meeting is not enough and one, a decision to overhaul everything is probably wrong-headed. You have to, with historical preservations, start step by step and decide what your priorities are. What are the most important things? Maybe the roof is the most, most important. Usually it is with a building. And start there and then work your way through the needs that the people in the building have. Having walked through the building this morning, I was again very impressed with the beauty of the details in this building and the fact that it was built for the uses that it serves. And I do not think that you can build another one like this today. It would be very costly to do so. We have something, as Tom Sorenson pointed out, that is very special to us. The heart of our county and we need to preserve it. So I hope you'll consider it very seriously and at the same time, consider very seriously the importance of having a jail facility that will serve us better because it is inadequate. It's hard to make the decision of how to do it, but I think step by step, not worrying about the whole so much as what the most needed things are and getting those done. And that way, I think we can afford it and we can get going on it. Thank you.
Are there any other visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Take a motion to go into ditch board. I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, we're in ditch board. Brad.
Okay, my name is Brad Stanger and I'm with Altegg Engineers. And we've been working on the clean out of the Yankton Clay ditch. And progression-wise, we're, we're almost done. We're, we're working on cleanup items right now. But we do have one issue we have to deal with. So there's one landowner along the, along the, there's one landowner along the ditch that is not on board with us removing her evergreen trees. And that mile is, is done except for right, right by the farm place. And so what we have going on is there's some cedar trees. They, they are growing out of the, what, what would be the, the bank of the slopes that we wouldn't, that other places we had taken out. So I think, I guess there's a couple courses of action we can do. You know, there, there, you know, there, we think there is easement there, that, you know, it's so old and, and we'd have to research the, and I don't know that it's recorded or recorded properly and the, and the like. So it's a little sketchy there to go in and just, we have an easement. We can take them out, whether she's on board or not. So that's course of action one. We can look at, look at that. And, and if you want to go down that road, want to do that just right to make sure that we're not, you know, getting sideways with any, any issues. Or the other, the other course of action is, is that short section, you know, there is like, there's a dead, there is like a, a tree laying in the bottom of it. We dragged that one out, cleaned out the bottom and leave that sort of section. So that's, that's really the two courses of actions we, we have there. And I guess, I guess, you know, for how you want to proceed.
Well, I think at a minimum, we should take that out of the bottom.
Oh yeah, that, 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 that's got to come out. And I've talked, it might already be out. I talked to the contractor about it, but he was going to wait until after to, to, so he might not have done that yet. Yeah, that one for sure is, will, will come.
That was a dead one. It was lying across the.
Yeah, you can see it from the road. It's, it's laying right in there. We'll, we'll pull that out and, and, and clean up the bottom and what we can and then.
Yeah, I doubt if there'd be any issue with that.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't even gonna ask her where it's going to pull it out of the cable and be done.
On the cedars, how many of those would we have to take out, Brad? Would we have to take out some percentage of them or the whole thing or?
There are.
In order for it to work, for the ditch to work properly.
Well, you know, if we're going to clean out the sides, all, all the cedars that were there, all our evergreens that I, when I, when I walked through there were, were, there were none on top that would stay. So that would be the, you know, we'd.
Because he can shred from the bottom of the brick?
Well, yeah, that, that's, that's tough. So then the other, the other one would be, and we could, you know, go in the bottom, you know, and, and not go on the side adjacent property to shred them. And I think we can do that, but when we were doing that last time, you know, the law got involved and that's what we stopped, stopped that operation there right, right, right by, right by the farmhouse.
So we don't know the history of that easement?
Microphones. We don't know the history of that. Mannings wasn't on either, I believe.
Mine's on.
Mine's on.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so we, we don't have the history of that easement?
Well, it, it, you know, the documents that we're, that we can find are, they're, they're old. There is, it is like nineteen nineteen, something like that. So we found some that talked about easements and I can double check. I don't think like the, a lot of times it's recorded on the property. And I don't think it is with the, well, at the registered.
I mean, that seems like a, like a lawyer question.
Yeah.
I see a Lexus out there. You want to poke your head in and tell us, tell us what you think?
Okay. So on our clay creek ditch clean out project. One of, one of the landowners is, is not on board with us taking the trees. And what, what feedback she gave us was especially hurt these evergreen trees. And so I, I've been out there and looked at them and the evergreen trees are growing on the, would be the sides of the, the slopes of the ditch. Which in, in other locations removed them. So. I guess the course of actions that we talked about was, one is we clean out the bottom. And, 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 you know, it's, you know, it's a, it's a few hundred feet. That's, we remove the, we clear out the bottom and, and be done. And not, not take those evergreens. Or, or we could investigate, you know, our, you know, the, the, the authority. And see about, and just go do it without. Agreement. And that, that's really kind of the two options, the two courses of action. She's, when she said especially the evergreen trees and their cedar trees there and, and there are none of, you know. None of them are really on the top. We, we take them all. They'd all be gone if, if we did that. So there wouldn't be any remain and, and. The easements that exist there are a little, I guess in my opinion, maybe a little sketchy. You know, there's some documents evidently that talk about widths. I don't think they're filed at the, here in the courthouse against the property and. You know, we just want, if we're gonna do that, we want to do that just right. So that we don't, you know, when we, when we were doing the initial project, when they, you know, they were going along the ditch grinding on the trees. When they got close, you know, the law was involved and we stopped and moved off. And, and then we made some contacts to try to. Facilitate getting them done, but I don't think that's gonna, gonna happen, that we're gonna get a, you know, permission, if you will.
Okay. We'll have to look into that easement.
Yeah.
Trying to check with the register of deeds and.
Is there any chance to talk to her, Dick?
I don't know. I, my, the number that I had was not current.
Okay.
But I think.
We must have a current one though.
Leo, I think we might be able to get back in through the renter guy that farms the land.
Yeah, it might be able to help with the number two, because our contractor has visited with her. I think it was. Like a sister.
Yeah, yeah, those trees are, they're big. They, they've got to have been there for.
Those cedar trees are, they're awfully big for cedar trees.
Yes.
They are. So.
I've been out there a couple of times and I guess the question I've got too, if we, if the. Easements have not been recorded, we may have trouble there. How? How much issue would we have, you know, given the position that is along the length of the ditch? And amount of flow that would go by that place, how much of an issue would those trees give us as far as restricting flow? Past that point in the ditch, is it going to, is it gonna inhibit the operation of the ditch? As the ditch is designed to work?
Well, you know, like I said, the, the, the trees and, and the brush does reduce the flow. You know, you can't say because it's, that's a, that's a matter of fact. So two things to look at is. It's. You know, it, it is a short section, but it.
So we can kind of, you know, we can get an idea of what the maximum flow would be past that.
Yeah.
Spot and.
It would have very.
Is that, would that inhibit that flow enough that it would inhibit the, the purpose of the ditch?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's a tough question. So it, 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 it does inhibit the flow. It does not inhibit the lower flows because as you go up the, up, up the side.
Right.
And flow, any flow downstream of that would have no impact, only upstream.
Correct.
So it is probably on the upper third of the.
Yeah, and that's why I asked, you know, we can kind of calculate what the maximum would flow would be after, say a. Fifty year rainfall event above that, you know, and. Whether that cross section that, that's there, that's still available with the trees in place, would that? I guess my question is, would that likely, if those sort of conditions. Make it so there'd be flooding upstream from that? In other words, do those trees act as a low head dam?
Yeah, it could, you know, it would, it would reduce the flow. I mean, we'll, we'll clean up, we'll get the ones on the bottom, that will help a bunch.
Yes.
And.
In the brush.
Yeah, yeah, that'll help a bunch. We can.
But what I, what I'm doing is getting an idea how hard we need to fight here.
Yeah, I, I understand that, yeah, I know.
Well. Yeah, everything else is done.
Yeah, this is, this is it. They're doing cleanup and he just texted, I think he wants me to do a final inspection here. So just do a cleanup right now.
So we're having the annual meeting the ninth of April. She's always there. She was in favor of this last year.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not gonna, personally, and I mean, I don't know what the board wants to do, but I don't think we'd have, we could hold him. Accountable for not being completed.
Right.
Especially if we have to talk to her face to face and that's the only day we get to talk to her, so.
And our completion date is right after that.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, it's so far the contract's been pretty, pretty flexible. I mean, I'm meeting with them today, I can say that we're gonna. I can tell them, well, so I like to think that sometimes if you just have a little. You know, it's, it's a little face to face that we probably be on board.
Yeah.
Or perhaps, you know, there, there's some of the evergreen trees that are at the base of the, base of the ditch, but the base of the slope. Maybe we take some and not, not the ones towards the top.
Well, that's why I posed that as a question with the grinder, we could do that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Frankly, even if it was flowing in April, if she'll let us in from the top, let's grind them right off, grind them down.
Right.
But, but, and that was the deal, we didn't, we, we, we didn't, we, you know, we didn't go into the top because that whole easement. You know, where, where it is and we weren't gonna go down that road, so we.
But he can't work from the bottom and shave up the sides?
Um, can, yes, but maybe not in April if it's, if it's.
If we get some rain.
Yeah, it'll be flowing.
But I mean, right now.
Yeah.
There, there might, it might be a little sketchy now, but, but, so we, you know, we can do it from the, from the top and. Yeah, how far off the ditch and easement would go is, gets really sketchy because the ditch. Not the same configuration as it was in nineteen nineteen.
But if we worked from the bottom and didn't get on the side, I mean, we have the end slope.
Yeah. And that's what we were doing, but it's getting real, really sketchy now, driving up the, driving up the, driving the excavator.
It's, it's pretty slick.
Yeah, it was getting real soft even.
But I mean, if we can't get anywhere, that's.
Right, yeah. There's a rain, possible rain next, a week from today, I think it is. We've got some great drying weather between now and then. I noticed there's, out of work, I've noticed the, they've been hauling a lot of the brush by.
Yeah.
Many, many side dumper pulls a brush going by where I work out there.
Yeah.
So is the issue, the manner in which you're gonna remove the trees and the fact that it's gonna destroy property and all that, you're gonna have to go.
She, she doesn't want the trees gone.
Well, I mean, that's a problem in and of itself because you can't block flow of drainage. So it's ultimately then gonna be her responsibility to take care of that from, from my recollection and perspective. The only thing that gives me some pause here is number one, absolutely identifying what those easements say. So we make sure if we don't have the proper mechanisms in place that we obtain those. And number two. Kind of coming full circle to our ditch board. We need to identify, we, we talked about this last time in an entirely different context as it relates to grant reporting requirements. We need documentation of that about specifically outlining what our obligations, responsibilities and acting positions are. We've got to either find the original documentation that annexes that and outlines what our responsibilities are. Or implement something new. And that's the only other thing that gives me a little bit of pause about that is that. If we've assumed the responsibility for this, which we have and contracted for those things, then. Then we've taken that responsibility away from her. On the other hand, if she doesn't allow you to go in and take care of it, I mean, that's gonna be a problem. I'm assuming there's probably visibility issues with this too, if those trees are continuing to, I mean, that's a liability for her.
It's not, I don't think it's an issue on the road.
No. These are along the ditch, off the road. They start, what, a hundred feet down?
Yeah, a few hundred feet, probably four hundred feet long stretch, a bit off the road. I'm trying to recall, but it, it doesn't affect any kind of traveling issues.
And, and viewing from the road, this is one of those places where you see that it's a grove of cedars there. You go, that's a nice little grove, but parts of that grove at least, if not all, are within the, the, the peak of the burn. In other words, they're in the area where there would be during high flows, the water would need to flow through there. And that's part of the tree, the reasons for my questions with Brad is that, how critical is that? If we're, we're up two thirds of the way towards the headwaters and. What would the highest flow that we could expect during a big snow melt or five inch rain?
Well, the other thing is, is the property owners upstream, if you will, are gonna be impacted by that and potentially road maintenance. Because the, the water then doesn't go anywhere. That's hence the reason that this ditch maintenance has to happen. And it's gonna get stuck there and it's gonna affect everybody else. So that's what I say, I think this is as much as it should be. And part of that conversation with her of like, hey, this isn't about just disrupting natural beauty, this is about issues. So I don't know additionally what you want me to look into from here. I mean.
I think it'd be really helpful to have the history of the easement, yeah?
Yeah, we'll have to go into the register of deeds.
Yeah, good for that. Well, I think the big deal here is, we had the annual ditch board last year, she was there. This whole issue was brought up about cleaning this part of it. She never objected to it.
No.
She, and so I mean, and, and she did ask some questions that day, I know she did. So obviously she was trying to understand it, I'm hoping that she did in the end. But I know she knew it was part of her land that was gonna be involved. So it isn't like she wasn't aware of it. She was aware of what was gonna go on.
Nope.
And so when everybody that was involved in it and was gonna pay for it was agreement. I mean, I think that means a lot. And so we'd have the meeting minutes from that meeting, correct? So that would be something that we could show her too, that that was done at that time.
Carrie, if you want to put this issue on for next week and we'll look for those easements this week.
Yeah, would you want me to go see if I can catch up to her? Leo called actually about it. He, he offered to walk into the breach with me if I went out there.
I would like to volunteer to go with you or be with you when you talk to her.
Okay.
I think I might be able to help that a little bit too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we got. Construction types, that might help a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Just get her.
We don't want too many because she'll may feel like we're ganging up on her, but, yeah.
He's always liked me.
Yeah.
Well, more than two of you shouldn't go anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
And then Lisa said she's gonna help me try and find those easements.
Awesome.
So, let's see, pay application for Clay Creek Ditch Burn. This didn't get paid, Brad?
Yeah, I, I can, so I, I put together the, the pay application. I just got a call from Dan Liam in here last week. And he just, hey, I hadn't gotten paid yet, so I.
Really?
And I, I sent that in, but I, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was done too, but he hadn't gotten it. And so I, I quick put together the application just in case.
Can you look into that, Carrie?
I can look. I don't remember whether we approved that or not. I mean, do you want to approve it now just in case?
Nope, we'll do that next meeting.
I, I did tell him that it probably wouldn't get approved this meeting because it was too close to the, so.
Yeah.
It was a very friendly, it was. One other thing to, to visit about too. Rod and I looked, this is back to the Yankton Clay Ditch, close to this end where it crosses the highway. There's some erosion there that we were looking at, placing some rip rap. And we visited with the contractor, so he would be on board if we were to add some work to that. But before I drew it up and figured it all out, I just wanted to make sure, because I, if I recall. When we, we did the original project, we, we trimmed off some of it because we didn't have the, the money to do it. So I guess what I'm fishing for is, do you have the money to do the rip wrapping or do we postpone that?
Well, what's this next pay gonna be? Do you know for, what, we gotta pay three D, that's next?
Um, he's, you know, like I say, very close to done. I think we've paid in that seventy percent range. Already, I, I've been holding something back and just until he's done.
Are we to seventy or are we to like fifty five?
Well, it was, some of it was, you know, some of the items, some of the clean out items, I had higher than some of the, the, like, we had, we had. Removing the brush was different than like the beaver dams and so on. And so I.
This was like a hundred and eighty thousand dollar project, wasn't it?
So, and I thought we, I thought, I don't think we, I guess what I'm getting at, I didn't think we left very much on the table. And, and I just.
Yeah.
I have no problem, you know, I'll engineer it, but, you know, if we don't have enough to, to pay him to do it, then I, I won't, you know, will this?
Well, I think we're pretty close, you know.
Well, we might as well get it engineered, so we know what needs to go in there.
Okay, yeah, that's no big doubt. And I was just gonna sketch it up and just figure some, how, how about how many ton of rip rap and.
What's that gonna cost us? Is this one pro bono?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're not gonna get a, yeah, 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 I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm gonna need a fee amendment for that one. I thought, I thought you meant the, the actual construction.
You. Do you know how much we have in there, Carrie?
I was just pulling that out.
So yeah, figure out what we need and then we'll be able to.
Yeah.
I thought we had like fifteen thousand dollars left to pay it. Was it something like that?
That was the decrease in the overall contract.
Pay him, yeah, we, we owe him more, a little more than that.
Okay, I guess I was thinking that.
But, but since we've done it, we've collected last falls and we'll collect next, the first half next month, so.
Right now, we have a hundred and one thousand in there.
Your microphone.
Right, microphone. Right now, we have a hundred and one thousand in there.
We're gonna have to get Phyllis a soccer referees flag.
I thought of making a sign.
Yeah, give us a red.
I tried to turn it off in between so everybody doesn't hear me typing for the whole meeting.
We'll put up with that.
Yeah, it's okay. I've become the turn on your mic person.
Anything else for ditch board then?
No.
Does anybody have anything else?
No, I think that's what I know. Thanks, Brad.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, well, I think, I think we can get this done if we just.
Yeah, that rip wrapping job, that should be ten K or so.
Um, yeah, yeah, I can. Um, yeah, yeah, I can, let me, while you guys talk, I'll, I'll just crunch a quick, good numbers here.
So there wouldn't be much work that had to be done with it. It's more or less the materials.
Yeah, yeah, but the, the rock, rock is kind of high and then that's what.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Bear with me while if you want to, and I'll, I'll give you a real quick back of a napkin cost estimate of what that will take.
So everybody else that's getting.
Microphone.
Everybody else that's getting this ditch cleaned out is paying for it, right? I mean, landowners. So that stretch from bunions or, um, homes to the river. Who's paying taxes on that? Because I'm pretty sure nobody is.
That's the state of South Dakota land, yeah.
So.
If you want to get some money out of it, I'll let you.
Should we even have to worry about that?
We'll give you mileage up to the governor's mansion or.
That's what we have to take care of.
Might have to go forward.
I mean, it's got to get cleaned.
Well, it don't need to be cleaned.
What they have to do out is, is rip wrapping that would protect the bank, but it would not. Rip wrapping that would, you know, would, um, protect the bank some, but it would not.
No.
Improve the flow.
No, no. There's already, there's plenty of throat there at that point.
Yeah. But are those bushes and all that brush taken out of that? Yeah, that's gone.
It's gone. Nature took that. Yeah.
Well, by the time we got around to whatever the state or FEMA is going to cover, the road will be washed out. So we might as well just fix it.
Well, you could give us a number later, Brad.
Oh, yeah, yeah. While you guys talk, I'll do it. And then before I leave, I'll, like maybe just a couple of minutes, I just.
Move to come out of ditch board then?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're in regular session. Rod? Emergency relief contract amendments?
So we filled out those forms last week.
Microphone.
Sorry, Phyllis. We filled out those forms for emergency relief at the last meeting. And just I would send them in, the state got ahold of Carrie and I and said they had a mix up in those numbers. So we have to wait for like the third time to revise these numbers. And Carrie put it on there just in case. Um, we got the, those two forms back and we haven't received them yet. So just to tell you, the ones we passed last week or, yeah. They're in the trash and I'll bring a new revised version again. Other than that, just have the bid openings for our material.
Okay. Well, now's the time and place for the bid openings for highway materials. What's that, Rod?
Twenty K.
Twenty thousand?
So this one's from concrete materials, bid on asphalt and concrete. D two asphalt, uh, it's seventy one dollars a ton. G two asphalt at fifty eight dollars a ton. This one's from Holloway. This crane work. Forty ton crane with operator at four and a quarter, four hundred and twenty five dollars an hour. Uh, CAT three oh nine excavator with operator, two hundred and twenty five dollars an hour. Bridge superintendent labor is a hundred and sixty bucks an hour. Uh, Barkley asphalt, bid on asphalt concrete. They didn't break it out, Rod. It's just there's no G two or D two. So it's sixty six and sixty six dollars and twenty five cents a ton. HMA. Okay. Loaded on county trucks. It doesn't say where it's from. We'll let you figure all that out. Midstates for road sealing and rubberized mastic bid. Let's see, Road Saver two twenty one max seal. Uh, point five zero three cents per pound. And mastic one leveling mastic. Point five six four cents per pound. Brock White Construction, Road Saver two two one and mastic one bid. Road Saver two two one. Boxless, is it sixty two cents a pound? Boxed, is it fifty six cents a pound? And mastic one leveling mastic. Boxless is sixty three cents. Boxed is fifty two cents. Brock White Construction Fleximatt bid. Fleximatt, four dollars and seventy five cents a square foot. Merlin Roy's paving, uh, bid on asphalt concrete. Class G type one, forty nine dollars and fifty cents a ton. Class G type two, fifty three cents and fifty three dollars and ninety cents a ton. That's from Sioux Falls. Hancock, bid on concrete culverts, boxes and cattle passes. Thirty six inch culvert. Fifty three dollars and sixty four cents a foot. Sixty inch culvert, a hundred and forty three dollars and five cents a foot. Terra, bid on concrete culverts, boxes, cattle passes. Thirty six inch culvert, sixty cent, sixty dollars and twenty two cents a foot. Sixty inch culvert, a hundred and sixty eight dollars and twenty five cents a foot. For North, Beetle County metal, solid wood. Six inch culvert, fifty six dollars and thirty five stones, sixty inch culvert, ninety three dollars and fifteen cents. Anything else for Rod?
Oh, that's right. As you recently all these pictures. Do you recall last fall, starter township?
You're not seeing my son?
I'm going to have to send you some flowers, I guess, for as many times as you have to reply. Starter Township came to you, I believe, last fall wanting help. And the way I understood it, they wanted help replacing these two concrete structures. And you agreed to furnish two pipe to replace these two structures. But as you can see, they put the two pipe in for one structure and left the other structure. So I guess, not trying to be a tattletale. I'm just looking for guidance because I had Township in the office yesterday. And they're going to be here next week to request help replacing I don't know how many structures. But I just want to know, did I misinterpret what they were saying that day? Were they not going to replace both structures in one pipe in place of each structure? I heard since then that those two pipe were only big enough to replace one structure. But my recollection, and you can't really see these picture, pictures because it's still frozen. But I was thinking this is the worst of the two structures that's left.
The one that's remaining.
Yeah, it's the worst of the two. So I guess what, you know, just a heads up. Maybe, and I don't want to be anymore to do with any more stuff, but we, are we going to have to put something down in writing from now on? Are we going to have to have some rules instead of, you know, that was, if I remember right off the top of my head, about eighty seven hundred dollars worth of culverts. And I thought we were getting rid of two structures. Because I mean, they're right next to each other and we only got rid of one. And I didn't know what you guys' thoughts were or if I heard wrong.
Well, if I remember right, I thought they were going to replace things which you think that, that they were going to put a culvert in each one. And that was the idea. That's why we did the two for them. You know, because, because they, they were both, they were talking about both structures at that time, that they both need to be prepared to be gone. And I thought that was their, their whole thought. So and maybe that's something we are going to have to make sure a little more in writing in the future. That, that they get something from us that they understand what we expect to.
And I just have to go across these in my, on personal time, I'll drive around, looking around and I drove by there and I had to back up because I, and I wasn't for sure if I heard. Right, so I just wanted you to be aware in the future, I guess, maybe we got, you know, the, and you know how many other structures these guys talked about that day and they've already are thinking it's another year. So I'm sure they'll be back in in the future too, but, um, I just wanted you to be aware of it anyway.
So you said another township is going to come in next week?
Yeah.
No, I haven't received any calls.
Not my fault.
But they'll be in, well, yesterday they told us, they were calling, Carrie, what night? Left the office to get on the agenda for next week. So I'm sure after today they'll be calling.
The, uh, meal meeting day.
Oh, yeah, I think, I guess you could say something about that. But yeah, they asked us what you guys are willing to do. And I told them that they'd come talk to you.
How'd they figure out how big a culvert they needed, Rod?
Up there.
On the one here that we're looking at.
Well, the treasurer of that township is the ex.
Oh, yeah.
Highway engineer from the Yankton area.
But you're right. And looking at it, it looks as if that, uh, to replace the one that's visible at least, you'd need more than those two, two culverts in order to handle that amount of flow. And the way it's set up is this, is this, uh, off to the side like that? That's not going to end up causing troubles with erosion or anything downstream.
There was, there was, it's pretty white.
Wait a minute.
Ditch, it's called Dickerson.
Phyllis, did we lose you?
No. I'm here. Somewhat mentally, but not physically.
You're breaking up.
Yeah, the remaining little structure, you can see symmetrical, so it's meant to direct flow off to the side.
It had that our connection was unstable.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't an agreement we gave in the pipes that they were going to do the work, right?
Yeah, that's what.
That was the agreement.
That was what we did.
Yeah.
How big are those culverts?
I don't know. I thought they were bigger than that. Larry thought they were four or.
Two fifty fours? What's the, what's the opening on that box? What's the opening on that box?
I'd have to look it up. Probably six by. So again, thirty square feet.
And then fifty four inches. Four and a half, four and a half.
Fifty four inch takes sixty square feet, so two of them would be thirty two.
You've got a bunch of them.
I'll be hitting this dip now.
Yeah.
We get out and get back in or what are we doing?
I'm afraid if I get out of this, we're not going to get everybody back in. Usually it will reload itself and then you get everybody.
Not hearing anybody. We got a bad connection.
Yeah, the computer's froze on this end, Phyllis, if you can hear us.
I can hear you, and I can see you.
Well, if we, I guess, we'll, we'll keep moving forward as you can see and hear us.
I can see and hear you when you speak, and speak into the microphone.
Okay, you, you break up every now and then when you try and talk, so.
Oh.
Don't be afraid to jump in if we lose you.
Okay.
You lose us, or however. Okay, anything else, Rod?
No, that's all I have. Oh, as you probably know, wait until the torn out of the river.
Well, I have to ask, when are they coming off?
And I would not, I would expect you to ask.
Haven't they been up long enough?
In the near future.
In the near future.
Roads are in full swat.
Yeah.
Have one of those next few weeks, gonna be tough on the roads that we're free.
I actually had a guy from Cargill call me. Because I sell grains at Cargill down there, he called, wanted to know why they were putting them on in all the counties up here in South Dakota. Said, because the roads aren't, not that great a condition yet, we wanna make sure. He said, so, they are, they'll be on, what, for a week or two?
Well, maybe a little longer.
They will, yeah.
Only good thing is, there's not a lot of moisture in the ground.
No.
Yeah, it shouldn't take too long with this.
No, but I mean.
I mean, I think I heard they were, some place they were talking, seventy degrees this weekend.
Wow.
That's the worst part, it comes out that fast, the roads in the past, that's when you have a breakdown.
But there isn't much frost there either.
Eighteen inches.
Well, before the deep freeze we had, it was only four. Should come out fast.
But that's all I have.
Okay. Building project discussion.
Real quick, I just noticed that Lauren is signed on now, and I don't know if you guys wanna do Erickson quote for the four H office real quick while she's on.
Oh, we can, yeah.
It should only take a minute.
Are you on, Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, so what are we doing here?
I had contacted Erickson Solutions to come look at our internet and networking at the office. We have had some trouble with it every once in a while, it's not awful, but I think with Raven coming on, it maybe got a little more apparent to her. We've been having testers come in, which is sometimes a problem if the internet's not working when she needs it to be working in the morning. And then also, if we currently don't have internet that reaches out into the kitchen or into the big room, which I can work around that, sometimes it's a problem when I do workshops and such, but if we're gonna continue to ask our families to meet on Zoom hybrid with in-person, and it's kind of a problem not to have internet out there for them, I think people just expect that nowadays, too, when they come somewhere, that they should have access to internet.
And for fifty-two hundred dollars, this'll get you what you think you need?
I am not claiming to know much about technology, so that's what they are saying that we need, they came to look at everything to see how they can reach it as far as we need it, and that's what they came back with.
Who is "they"? Is that Erickson?
Erickson, yep.
And it, it looks like there's a six hundred ninety-six dollar a year charge ongoing, what, what exactly is that for?
Carrie can probably speak to that.
It's for cloud switch management license, portal license firmware updates yearly.
Yeah, licensing fees.
Retainer.
That's expensive internet.
It's, it's worth noting that they're putting the extension office under the county's sort of umbrella for IT services. And so, as I understand it, part of that licensing fee is for cloud backups, which I don't think that they have any backups right now, am I right about that, Lauren?
No, we do not.
Either was to go down, they would lose everything.
Where's this money coming out of?
It would come out of our county IT budget.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve it, because it sounds like we're gonna need it, so we don't have a lot of choices here.
Yeah, it includes board portals for out there. For rentals. I guess I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, vocal.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Man, yeah, Packard.
Yes.
Mackler.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else, Lauren?
Not that I can think of, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, back to the building project discussion. How last night goes. If the button's up, it is.
There you go.
There we go.
I just wanted to bring you up to date of the, of the work of the courthouse committee. It met last night for almost two hours, and we were proceeding, we had quite a bit of discussion on next steps. As you know, when the pandemic hit, our committee recommended to you folks that we not have, try to have in-person public meetings. That really put a pause on a lot of our activities, that wasn't something that we we particularly wanted, but it is what it is. The next steps that we discussed last night is finding a way to hold our public meetings. We talk about possible menus, venues, in which to hold them, when to hold them. One of the things that we're waiting on for this, for these public meetings, the cost estimates that we have are almost a year old. So our consultant, Dick Strasburg, is going to be meeting with the architects and the CMAR firm to get updates on those estimates. So when we have our public meetings, hopefully we'll have some good, accurate, off-to-date estimates. We haven't set a number yet on how many public meetings we wanna have. Obviously, we're gonna have more than one. The architectural firm that you folks hired will be participating in those public meetings, and our committee members will be participating. I think that's the gist of what we, we did last night. I understand the public's concern about where we're at with this thing. But again, with the, with a pandemic pause, we're just, did not wanna have public meetings. But we will have updated and accurate cost estimates later this month. And then we will have our public meetings. Any questions?
Well, those estimates include definitely the, a new jail, and then restoration addition, and, and/or addition to the current building, and then alternative of new.
Yeah, there's a Dick Strasburg can comment on that. We'll be getting a cost to renovate the existing jail, renovate to add on to the existing jail. So we've got those two, you know, those kind of parallel there. And then to renovate and build out a, a new detached facility, meaning we'd renovate the existing courthouse, and then we'd build out a new facility for the jail and law enforcement elsewhere. And then we'll have the cost to build new, just a jail and an LEC, and then also the jail, LEC courts and city admin. So I think we'll have pretty good cost estimates, actually very good cost estimates on kind of every, sort of every possible scenario. And our goal is to have that by the twenty-third, I believe it was, it's, yeah, two weeks. We'd have, we'd have it so you'd have, if it's, Alexa said we need to have it ready to have a resolution by April one, so we wanted to get it to you, so you had two meetings prior to that. So require a special meeting on the twenty-third, and then on the thirtieth. You know, your typical meeting on the thirtieth, to have all this cost estimate information put together. So that's kind of, there's kind of two parallel paths here, there's one, working through the construction costs, you know, soft costs, architect fees, and, and those type of things, and and the, you know, furnishings, so we've got, you know, complete budget contingency, kind of what it'll take to do it. That's one pair, one path, the other is working through the operational the cost of one, doing nothing, if we close a jail, what it costs to house it elsewhere, and then you know, this, kind of this whole thing of realizing that we either build a jail ourselves here, or we build one for somebody else. Because there's a, there's a, in your case, you got a pretty strong argument that, that long-term, it's building your own is gonna be more cost-effective. And then also the possibility of, of taking another you know, housing for other counties during the initial years, when it's, when yours is in fall. So we, we kind of worked through that operational model as well, so that way, when you're making the decision to, on what direction, final direction you're gonna take here, that have all the information to, to do that.
I would like to tell you folks, and I think most of you already know that the survey that the government research bureau did, we just got that yesterday. And I sent it to all our committee members, and sent it to the commissioners. That's your document, that's, that's a, a piece of research that you folks paid for. I don't feel that I have the authority to distribute that beyond the committee and the commissioner, so if you may or may not get requests to to make that a public document, I, I I don't know how you wanna handle that.
It's gonna be a public document, because the public paid for it, so.
Right.
So it's gonna be available.
Well, I, I'm glad to hear that, I just didn't feel I had the authority to to release that. And I'll be happy to.
Share that with whoever you want.
I can put it on the website, too.
That'd be great.
It's, it's, it's interesting, because last December, I wrote a three-page summer report about the first couple of years of activity of the committee. And we, we got it on the front page of the Plain Talk. It's on our portion of the Clay County webpage, there's a link to it on the VDC webpage. And it's interesting, because to me personally, nobody's ever contacted me with a question about that report. And I'm not sure what that tells me. I'm a lousy writer. Don't shake your head, yes.
Sorry, Bob.
But when I hear people saying that we don't tell what we're doing, it's, it's out there. It's out there.
I'm Wes Pravichak, I'm just wanting some clarification on the bids that will be coming in. So, so you'll be giving a bid on the possibility of remodeling the old public safety building anew. Do nothing, got that. And then will part of this bid be remodeling the courthouse, or expenses to that, as well as build new? I'm just wrapping myself up.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not bids though.
Different ways.
They're, they're not bids, they're estimates.
Estimates, yeah, that's, that's, yep.
Yeah, it's, it's everything that's gonna be, when he gets the reports, if I'm right, Dick.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put estimates together on, on everything, renovating the existing building and adding on to the existing building, so that's kind of one scenario. And then the other is, second one is renovate the existing building, and then build a new jail, LEC elsewhere, something that's not detached, you know, so it's detached, not attached to the existing building. And the third would be to build new.
Yeah, you're breaking up, I'm sorry.
Building new, and then jail, with the jail and LEC is one option, and then doing the whole works is another option.
Now, the ultimate goal here, obviously, with, with this information on estimates with public input, is determine what language was gonna be used on a referendum election. And that then brings in deadlines. And we need to be very, very aware of that. And that's what our committee goal is going to be, to
Yep.
make a recommendation and, and get it on the ballot.
So, so that was, I, I just wanted to comment and follow up on that. Couple of things that, that I know we're visited about, too, is the survey, it was contemplated that, that a missing component was those costs. Had, I mean, that wasn't able to be a factor for people, and that could have impacted them, and it just, it's where we're at. Then probably in the end, we're gonna get these updated costs, and had costs been out there, they wouldn't necessarily be reflective of current building costs anyway. But something to keep in mind, and that was discussed in that regard. The other thing that I wanted to make sure we touch based on today, as it pertains to that, are deadlines. Because last fall, in the midst of COVID, I mean, everything kind of came to a screeching halt. I shouldn't even say fall, last summer, because it was agreed upon putting things on the November, remember ballot, was not something that the committee and the commission decided with the lack of ability to have public meetings about that. At the time, that was the intent expressed, is that it would go on the June ballot, and not necessarily an additional special election because of voter turnout. And so, putting something on either that June or November timeframe is gonna get us the best voter turnout, though there is a possibility to do something and deviate from that. When we look at those deadlines, Carrie received an election calendar from the Secretary of State's office. The deadline for the ballot language to be submitted is that April first. So we have to have a decision, a resolution identified, a decision made, decision made, resolution implemented, if you all want to move forward in that fashion. And then that language to be submitted by April first, and that puts us in a timeframe here. So knowing what that's going to be, what the recommendation is, and what's going on the ballot is this month, then, in order to get that language submitted by April first. So that's, that's part of the, the timeline here, and some of that then naturally having to come, there's gonna have to be some public meetings that come after that determination is made about why the committee has come to the conclusion is, and why the, the commission does. So I'm not saying, obviously, you have your, your meetings here, that information's gonna be shared, costs are gonna be shared, all of those things, but if you want it on the November ballot, you gotta make a decision this month. Or, excuse me, in June, June ballot, yes, so.
Yep.
Who's speaking?
It is to me, I'm Dan Christoffersen. The plan is to make a decision before April first on a committee The plan is to make a decision before April 1st on a committee recommendation. So, so what'll be on the ballot is either yes or no for that decision. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there won't be a choice, it's just yes or no. It won't be option A, B, C or anything like that.
That's going to be a yes, no vote.
And it, and it has to do with funding. So we don't have an option, you know, if, if there's a, if there's a ref, if there's a resolution to fund a project for X amount, that's what's going to go on the ballot. Do the taxpayers agree with that determination or do they not? And if the taxpayers vote that down, we'll come back to the drawing table and offer up another option. But that's, that's how I see that.
Which is why we did a survey to try and get some feel from the general public about their feelings towards this project. Their survey was sent to 6,500 residents in Clay County. We got 683 returns, about 10 and a half percent. At the conclusion of the survey that the government research bureau, they termed it decidedly mixed. I really believe personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee, but after going through that report, I think if somebody was for, for the recommendation to build a brand new building, they could find information in that survey to justify it. If somebody was decided against building a brand new building, they could find information in it to justify that. So the survey is indeed decidedly misleading.
Yeah, I, I, I think the thing that struck me in the survey was that 51% of respondents said they wanted to preserve the historic character of the building. I found it fascinating that keeping taxes low was actually low on the list, but I think that speaks to, you know, who actually responded. There was like a slight over-representation of people who were older and wealthier. Not surprising, that's who returned, you know, that, that, that's who gets on computers in response to postcards and, and answers. 53% said it was important to have a jail in the county. So I, I, I think that's pretty, that's pretty resounding. But looking at priorities, the first priority did seem to be historic preservation. And I, you know, I, I just think that we all need to really take a very close look at the full survey before, before we move forward. Because I, I, I think, you know, despite not having numbers, you get a really good sense of what, what people really care about. And, and that, that can guide us toward a, a bond issue that is, you know, takes care of the really important things. But also I think will allow us to, to put a bond issue out there that will actually pass.
The, the survey included an open-ended question asking for ideas of what to do with this building and there are some pretty good ideas there. There are some that are a little difficult to understand, but there are some good ideas there.
Phyllis?
I just want to mention that I feel strongly that we're, the April 1 deadline is very disturbing to me. I don't know that we can get the information and get enough out to the public to formalize a, something for people to vote on and not get shot down. I think it's worth thinking to take a little bit longer, get at least one, if not two, public meetings out of the way before we finalize what we want to put out there. And if it costs us more on a voting, we do it later. I don't know if I want to go all the way to November.
Yeah, Phyllis, I, I, I agree with you about, about those concerns and, and, you know, but I, I, I'm having trouble balancing that with what I see in the jail and what Andy Howe is telling us about the jail. You know, I, I, I think we, we have real-time constraints with respect to the jail.
I agree. Can we go with two votes? Just do a vote on the jail cost and jail, so that at least gets going.
And I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm thinking in the same direction, Phyllis.
It's interesting, if we had not had the pandemic, we wouldn't be here today.
Oh, correct.
And Phyllis, you, you scare my socks off when you tell me about November, the next November. Because, boy, that's, I've been living with this thing for a long time, my dear.
I realize, but we also do not want the vote to be negative if at all possible.
I appreciate hearing from you guys not waiting till November. I mean, whatever that looks like, because I would agree that conditions continue to deteriorate. We are going to get sued if we do not fix something and fix it soon. And, and that's not, I don't want to invite that, but it's a reality and I'm not going to be sitting here in this seat later when that happens saying, well, we didn't understand. It is, it is bad.
Yeah, and so, you know, I just want to say that I, I actually have some experience with jails and prisons because that was my first job out of college. And so I've been in jails and prisons, you know, like Vermont, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Connecticut. You know, working for the Connecticut Department of Corrections. And I, I, as, as bad as it is, and we, 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 we used to have a cell block that was brought on a barge from Sing Sing where, when they built their new prison and that became our New Haven County Jail. And that was a whole lot better than what we have here. I mean, I, I, you know, having been in a few dozen prisons and jails, I've, I've, I've never, this, this really has to change. Yeah. And it, it needs to happen soon. I don't want to wait for November. You know, I, I, I think the jail, I, I regard the jail as both a, an emergency and, you know, just a, just a matter of how, how we treat fellow humans, right? So I, I, I feel really, really strongly about that law enforcement center in jail. And I think from this survey, you can see that people understand that. They may not understand the courthouse, right? Because as somebody pointed out at the meeting last night, you know, people walk in the courthouse, oh, it looks great, it's so beautiful, it's historic. They don't understand the courthouse, but they sure do understand, you know, the, the jail problem. And I, you know, I, I, I think that's a lot more saleable than, you know, and it's, it's going to be expensive. But when you add the courthouse as a question, I mean, when I see that, you know, more than half the town, the, the, the county wants to preserve the historic character of the courthouse. What that says to me is that we're going to have trouble getting two-thirds. So I, and, and I don't think we should make a decision until, you know, that we have, until the 23rd. And maybe, I mean, Alexis mentioned last night, you know, we can pull the resolution together, we can pull everything together that we need to pull together. But I don't think we have to make a final decision until the 23rd about what those numbers will, will look like. And we can't make up, you know, a decision. One other question I have is about estimating the cost of land. If indeed we choose, as I think we must, to build the law enforcement center in jail off the footprint, I mean, of, of, of the land we own here. There's a lot of good arguments to be made for doing that in terms of space for inmates to have exercise and so on. You know, I, I think we need a, we need a land estimate in order to have a good bonding cost. And I, I don't think we have that yet.
Anybody have anything else?
I was going to ask Dick about his thoughts on this timing. This isn't your first or 10th rodeo, as I understand. And do we know anything on our bonding issues yet?
Because I'd say the overview comment I'd have, your community has reacted together way more than most. You've got this committee, it's done a lot of good work, you're organized, you've thought about this a long time. And then also you've got a need here that frankly, you know, one of the most urgent I've ever seen. And so you kind of got those things combined, that the cost of doing nothing, that, that, that isn't even a reality. Because it's going to cost, you're going to be adding dollars, people are going to be increasing taxes just to pay for housing inmates elsewhere if you don't build it. So you've got some pretty strong arguments to do it. So I think the timing on it, I'd say this is, this is pretty typical. It's pretty typical to, you know, the end users know the building better than anybody else in the public. And usually having the, the people who know the most about it really be involved in, in determining the need and then taking it to the public, educating the public, that's probably the biggest thing. Educate the public in terms of, of what the solution is. The idea that we go to the public with multiple solutions, then you'll end up with nothing. Because that doesn't, that doesn't work. You need to go and, and do the hard, kind of the hard decisions and the heavy lifting in a small group like the commission and the committee. And then, you know, make a recommendation and put it on the ballot and, and go from there. Something wishy-washy on the ballot, it, it, that doesn't work. I think there's many, many examples of that where that, that doesn't work. And also you want to have it that the people that really understand it, Andy, I mean, you know this thing better than, than anybody. And Alexis, you know it very well in terms of court interaction with the jail in terms of how that works. And Andy, you know that, that, the transport of inmates and everything involved, if you separate it. And that, it doesn't mean that there's a decision one or the other, but I think it's really important that the decision makers fully understand everything that's involved with whatever decision. And then educate the, the, the citizens on the facts of how you base your decision.
Well, thank you. One other comment is that, you know, we, we really need to sort out the, the city's contribution to this, this project and how precisely that's going to work. And, you know, that's probably a legal decision, there's going to be some sort of agreement there. They'll probably be, you know, it will affect Vermillion taxpayers differently than it will affect people who live in the county and not in the city. You know, in general, I think, you know, John Prescott told me a few weeks ago that, you know, on average, you know, they, they, they account for about 30% of the jail plus law enforcement center costs. And so we'll have to come to some agreement on that.
Which is why we need these final estimates.
I think, I think that was talked about though in the early meetings. And, and when it was talked about, it was based, they were going to base it on the square footage that the police department occupied, if I remember right. And so I think that that formula still will be used to figure out what they, what they contributed.
There's, there's a precedent there.
Yeah. So there was already something set there. But I, I think one of the other things that, at the meeting last night that came out was when they talked about where, if they build a new, and the price of what it was going to cost to buy a piece of ground. If I remember right, Dick, I think it was you that said that you don't do that at the start because you have, after you decide what you're going to do, if you're going to decide you're going to build somewhere else, that you'll have people that will come forward at that time to offer pieces of, of ground for sale. And that where you get a better price. I mean, if I go out here and pick out one that Dan Christoffersen's got over there and, and say, well, he wants $2 million for it. Well, maybe I can get one for Jerry Wilson for, for $500,000. I mean, you know, I mean, just saying, so we, we won't know that until we get to that point.
Yeah, and I, I'm not suggesting that we make a land deal first.
Right.
I mean, that would be a terrible idea.
Lincoln County did and you see how that worked.
But we, we do have to incorporate into.
I agree.
Issue some kind of estimate around land. And, you know, I, I think we could do.
But I just gave you a range, $2 million to $500,000.
We have those estimates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I sure agree with that. We agree with it, that you'll leave the land, the actual property selection till after the vote. Then everybody knows it's real and that's when people sharpen their pencil and decide, okay, if I'm going to keep this land and it's going to stay, you know, are we going to keep it and try and get more for it later? But we need to, we can need to come up with a value to put in the, the overall cost estimate that will be sufficient to buy land where we know we've got, you know, at least one option at that, at that value.
Jerry? I just have a question about the timing of an election, 2021 being an off-election year. Are there other things on the ballot in June here?
Yes, there's a city election and the school board.
City and school board. But so far as the county residents, we won't have anything to vote on, correct? So I, I don't recall what the cost of a special election is, but would it be worth thinking about a special election somewhere between April and November? That would, I, I, I realize that special elections bring out a small percentage of voters, but I'm guessing that the city election and the school board election would also be much less than even a June, normal June primary in an election year. Has, has that been considered, the possibility of special elections, say in July or?
Yeah, Kerry, can, can you talk about turnout in special elections?
You know, without the numbers right in front of me to see what turnout has historically been, like for city bond issues or, you know, school board candidates and that sort of thing, I don't know without those in front of me. I mean, certainly if you have more things on the ballot, you're going to get a better turnout. That's kind of why we'd hoped to put it on the ballot last November, but the pandemic, that just didn't happen.
And we will have, likely have a school board election, I assume, and probably in Wakanda. And so it's not that the county would be, county residents would be left out. You, you'll likely have an election too in your own school district, wherever that might be.
And the school district elections, just to clarify, don't always occur with the county involved. Usually they handle those themselves. The Vermillion School District and the City of Vermillion signed a combined election agreement with the county so that we would cost share for the election and it would cost each of us less than individually.
So the Wakanda one wouldn't necessarily be.
No.
At the same time.
No, they didn't combine with us, so likely if they have one, it'll be in April.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Just, please, please stop talking about November 2021.
My, my comment was to stop, basically meant to say, stop talking November. If anything, if we don't make it to the April 1st with a decision that we decide to do a special election.
As long as we get the construction numbers, that gives us two months to get the information out to the public. I think that's plenty of time.
Two months where.
April and May.
March 1st, we have to have.
Well, yeah, the April 23rd, early voting starts.
Right, that's correct. So I mean, we would want to have some public meetings very early in April. I think we can do that. It can be advertised in advance and we can do that.
Do you plan to go town to town or just here in Vermillion?
That hasn't even been discussed yet. I, I really can't answer that, I don't know.
What was the question?
Well, one of the things last night was we talked about where have, where to have it. I mean, there was all kinds of places throughout. I mean, it was up at the, on the university campus, you know, at the Dakota Dome or, or, or even at the. Sports Center, thank you. And so, I mean, it's just hard to, you got to have a big enough place that everybody can, you know, feel safe. And that's where it's really difficult in Vermillion, we don't, outside of the campus, we don't have a lot of that. So it might get to the point, like if we had it out at the 4H building, for example, we might have to restrict how many people we have a night, you know, in, in order to have it there. So that means that you might have to have, you know, continued nights. I mean.
The armory might be a possibility.
Armory is another one, you know.
School.
School is another one, school was mentioned at the gym, gymnastians, you know, it's, but I mean, it's. School is another one. School was mentioned at gym, gymnastians, you know, it's, but I mean, it's, those are the things that we've got, got to be worked out between now. I don't think anybody, when I listened to committees last night, everybody on there wants to be as transparent as, as possible. They want all the information out there. I think the biggest thing that we all realize, and Andy can attest to this, that even if we don't get things done here, if we don't get things done here by June for that jail, that we might between now and then have to close it. And I, and I'm serious about that. That's the thing that might have to happen. Because temporary until we get something done, because it, there's no way. As Alexis said, I don't want to get sued. And she doesn't want to do the worst. And one of the people that's on our committee is also a lawyer out of Minnehaha County. And she last night made the comment how, how much it could be bad. How much money it would cost us if we got sued. And I can't hate to even say it here in an open meeting, because somebody could, that ends up in jail could say, oh, I think I'll sue them now. I heard that they're, they're thinking about it. I mean, seriously.
I want to add one other thing to the discussion that we haven't talked about, which is if we did go ahead, you know, really on an almost emergency basis to bond the law enforcement center and the jail, I think it would be wise to include the courthouse roof. And the reason I say that is because Andy Howe pointed out last night and showed us some photos of the north side of the building where there's, you know, sort of water incursions that have come through the brick and are, have ruined like the interior plaster. That is almost always a roof problem. Sometimes it's a window problem, but, but you know, most of the time it's a roof problem. And this, you know, so the, Carrie says that there was another roof leak that was, you know, pretty massive in scale. So I think whether we decide to renovate the building or sell the building, whatever we want to do with this building, if we want to do anything except demolish it, it needs a new roof now. And I also regard that as critical. So if we actually did want to sell it, I don't think we could sell it with the existing roof. That just, that just didn't, wouldn't work. If we want to renovate it, we're going to add hundreds of thousands, maybe a million dollars to the cost of renovation by not fixing the roof. So I think as responsible stewards of the building, we ought to, I, I think, I think I saw an estimate a while back. It was like, what, about $330,000 for a new roof? Does that sound about right to people? So we, we do have an estimate, we need it to be updated on the same timeframe. You know, we need to get the updated estimate in by about the 23rd. But if we did that and added the roof project onto this base project, I, I think, I think we've, we've, we've got a winner.
I think we've got just a couple of comments on that. We'll have a roof estimate with the estimates that we, you know, put together here. And then something else that we'll do too is look at, have the architects look at the wall condition, because I'm guessing, and this is just, I'm, I'm an architect, my background as well. It may be coming through the wall itself. So the building may need to be tuck pointed, which means that you go on all the mortar joints on the exterior and update that. I don't know which it's coming in or maybe from the windows, but we'll look at that. So we can have a recommendation saying if you're going to fix the, what I call the building envelope, the roof, the walls, the windows, and what it would take to do that. So that way you've got that, kind of get it. So it's basically make a water, watertight box. And then it will also go through some of the other things on electrical. Because the building's got some very, very severe electrical concerns that I think would probably, if we kind of look at minimums. We'll try to break that down for you.
Would it include air handling and heat also, I hope?
Well, you know, yeah, we'll have that. We'll have all the information. It's going to be a seven-figure number though, when we look at, at starting to renovate it. These, we've been through this before, you know, we've done it both ways. Renovating the building is, these are, they're great buildings and the architect in me loves this building. It's, it, on the surface, it looks great, but when you dig into it, it's got many very expensive problems to solve.
And, and remember this building is not ADA compliant. Which is a lot of money to bring it up to ADA compliant.
Yeah, one of the things you run into, if I realize that counties don't have to follow, you know, a building code, but the, it's usually counties do because it sets an example for others who are under, you know, the building codes that would have that. But, you know, you need to spend a certain amount of your renovation work on meeting ADA. So that's one of the things that would, might trigger it if we, doing maintenance, like a roof replacement doesn't trigger it. But if you start actually doing renovation work, then it starts to involve that.
If I can just add my, my own two cents, take it for what it's worth. I think that the ADA compliance is a, a really big piece of it too. Because we did have a situation where the elevator broke down. There was a person up on third floor in a wheelchair in court that day. And the elevator repair people could not get there. They were busy with other projects. They couldn't come, even though it was an emergency situation. And that person's family ended up carrying them down the stairs in their wheelchair, all three flights of stairs to get down to the first floor because there were no restrooms for them. And there was no indication that before the building closed for the day, that they were going to get down any other way. And I just think about with the marble stairs, if there had been water, snow, anything on those stairs and one of those people carrying them had slipped, it could have been very, very bad. So just things to think about. The elevator does break down and there's, there's no backup.
There is the other issue, oh, the other issue of safety of various rooms. There's only one, what, exit entrance of the current room being used for the commission. And that's the case for many of our rooms.
Yep. You're touching on something that's a big deal and that is, to what extent do you renovate it? It's one thing if you're going to do is suggesting, you know, basically waterproof the building so it doesn't, you know, deteriorate further. The other, when you start renovating it, the building's got lots of issues to meet code, just hit minimum code. You've got a lot, both from a, an occupancy perspective with exits, but mechanically, electrical elevators, you've got, there's, there's lots of issues.
I just have a question. Does Judy Sullivan, does the taxpayers have to vote on to maintain a building, like roof? I mean, if you're maintaining your building, does?
Unless we have, I mean, you could, we could opt out. I mean, that could be preferred if we don't have the money to put the roof on. But, but no, it's.
I'm just curious.
No, those little decisions don't have to be voted in.
Although I, actually, that's a really interesting point because we did set aside a million dollars. And so we could take some of that money and allocate it toward, you know, stabilizing the building for whatever future use we choose. You know, and, and that would not then have to be added to the bond issue. We would have, we actually have the cash to do that. So that, that's a really, yeah, that's a really.
Yeah, you think, thinking, oh, spending more money, putting the two together, they might pass over law enforcement and a new roof, you know.
Wes, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Anything there?
This is Wes Pravacek again. My thought is, I'm just wondering about, boy, we understand the whole public safety thing. That's, that's a mandatory emergency situation. And there's no doubt about it that that just needs to be done. With a lot of these things, especially the need for the roof on this building, that would be probably the priority of things. But couldn't some of these other updates or fixes be done at a separate time? I mean, that could just be considered not maintenance, but it could be handled as you go down the line. I, I think about when I was working at the New Hearth Building and they, you know, they, we moved out for two years and they went to town and did the whole building. So old buildings are capable of being updated. Of course, we know where I can go on this thing. But it's, but it's possible to do these things. So I mean, I'm, I'm trying to not use the fear factor with, with taxpayers. But how can we go forward with this and jump on board? That's to me, getting into Wakanda, getting into Burbank, getting into Mecklenburg and talking to these folks and letting them know, here's what's coming up and these are some options, but this is number one. You know, the public safety and to keep Quay County up to speed. And so I think that could be a real selling point for folks when they want to step in and have things clarified a little bit. Now, and it's, it's going to be selling people on that idea. So, but with the courthouse, it could be a manageable piece at a time. And then get it up to speed. You know, we never had an elevator at the New Hearth Building, but got one that works and that was a plus. So two cents.
And thank you.
Did I have anything else? Thanks, Dick.
Next week, we're talking with Dick and the bonding company.
Next week? The 11th? Thursday, right?
No, 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 I'm talking next.
Oh, next Tuesday? Oh, okay. Thanks, Wes.
The only other thing that I was going to ask about is about bonding council. I kind of got mixed messages on whether we need that. So what Tom told me when I talked to him last week was that he has already given Meyer Henry kind of a heads up that it'll, it'll be coming. And so, so that Meyer Henry can kind of get started on their resolution and, and the language or, from what I understand, it's kind of a, you know, boilerplate type of thing, but then they just need to plug in the numbers and stuff so that it can be ready for us for the 23rd or the 30th. So do we need to reach out to them? Dick, are you still on the call? I can't. Okay. Do we need to, to retain them in some fashion? Is that up to the bonding company to do? I kind of got the impression that that's, that's on us to reach out and inquire about services. And if that's who we wanted to go with or what, what, what do we need to do? Do we need to be doing anything in advance of Tuesday's meeting?
Probably not before Tuesday, but obviously before the election. You need the, the verbiage to put on the ballot for the resolution. But that's, you know, these bonding companies, they've seen 100 of them, you know, so they know a lot of that. I mean, it's kind of mixed. You know, I asked the people in Minnehaha County how they did it and they, they don't use counsel until after the vote. They get the, the language from previous bonding issues and, you know, from the bond issuance companies. Because they, they see all this all the time.
The reason for bond council is to write an opinion as to the legality of the bonds that are being offered. So it's done at, before the time of sale. And so that would not be necessary until, you know, we, we knew exactly, exactly where we're going. And then bond council basically writes a letter of opinion that says, you know, this is, these are, this is a stable municipality, it's rated in a certain way, it's a good credit risk. So they, they, you know, they, 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 they give that, that opinion. And essentially what it does is makes it easier to sell the bonds. There are, there are some organizations, institutions, institutional investors who can't buy bonds that are not rated in a certain way and happen to have bond council. So it, it's a matter of interest rate competitiveness.
So I just want to make sure you guys don't need me to reach out to anybody and you're going to tell me if you do. Otherwise, Dick or the bonding company or someone else is taking care of that. I just don't want to drop the ball on something I need to do. So, okay. I'm going to go take a seat in the peanut gallery now.
You don't like it up here or what?
Yeah, you got to watch out, somebody might elect you.
Well, did, did you want to finish the other stuff before we went into that, that were down the bottom? That, or the COVID vaccine. Oh, okay. Never mind. We're going to the grant.
We're doing grant discussion now, right? We are on page seven, allowability of costs, federal programs.
So I'd suggest we just take off federal programs.
Allowability of costs, grant programs?
Yep. Okay, so the last sentence there, starting on line three, deviations from the budget approved through the grant award must be reported to, and we could just say the granting agency or the grantor.
Okay, to the granting agency. Got it.
And then we say, under delegation of responsibility, when determining how the county will spend its grant funds, the applicable department director will review the proposed cost. And I think we probably ought to be consistent with what we wrote earlier about the grants. I think we, did we use the word grant administrator? Designated grant administrator.
So replace department director with designated grant administrator.
And then take out federal later on in that sentence. So just say allowable use of grant funds.
I think this section B, it's okay to leave those federal references because it references a specific part, specific part of the federal code and specifically addresses federal funds. So I think those next two paragraphs are probably good and necessary. And then that highlighted sentence, let me think about that. I think I have a note there to say why we highlighted that, but. I, I'd probably leave it, and I don't know if that was you or me, Carrie. You know, if I highlighted it, my thought would be that it's just keying up to department heads or administrators. So you got to know your grant requirements, just because whatever stricter is what you're going to be held to. Even, so if our policies aren't as strict as your individual grant requirements. So if, if that was me, that would be my guess as to why I would have.
It was Carrie.
Well, and I, I did all the changes. Lexi had just kind of a, you know, paper copy that I went through and did the highlighting and the notes and stuff on that. So I'm guessing that you probably have that highlighted and I just didn't have a note to go with it. So, but that makes sense.
but that makes sense.
Yeah. And again, under number one, get rid of federal because it should apply to every grant.
Change federal to grant award or just get rid of it altogether?
Yeah.
And then again, on the last sentence, the second to the last word on the page.
Yep.
So just proper and efficient performance of the award. Then I would guess in that next bullet point and terms and conditions of the award.
Yeah.
Right.
And then maybe under the third bullet point on that page saying that whether the individual incurring the costs, at the very end of that sentence, take out federal and just say the, you know, the, the granting agency.
Take out federal government and just say granting agency.
Thanks.
And the next bullet point, take out federal there.
Yep.
And down a little further, whether the cost is needed for the proper and efficient performance of the award program.
Sure.
Both places. All three places.
Is there any on the bullet point? The one on whether it's approved in the approved budget and application? I don't see yet, but it may be here. Is there any room for having a approval of a change? That makes sense. Sometimes you find you need something that is applicable, but wasn't in the budget, but you ask request for addition. Not asking for additional money, but for change in the budget.
Yeah, I think when you do that though, that's considered part of the grant when you've got a accepted change. I mean, you could say the grant, you know, including whatever amendments, but then we kind of get into.
Or, or approved amendment.
Well, you could say, under that second bullet point, whether the cost is identified in the approved budgets, comma, application, comma, or its amendments. Or grant amendments.
Okay. Probably say approved grant amendments. So instead of is, just say or approved grant amendments.
Yep.
I've had many of those.
The dreaded change order.
Exactly.
Yeah. Under numbers three, I want to, I wonder if we want to replace federally dash financed with grant finance. So, you know, just include state grants and.
That makes sense. And then in number four, grant award instead of federal award.
So the only thing I would say to that is anytime it references this part 200, I think that that's referencing specifically, and you'll see it down in the, in the footnotes, CFR 200. So maybe not a huge deal, you know, up above some of those that we change when, when these one, two, threes all started. Footnote 14 on page seven identifies where some of that's coming from. This is all, all of these requirements, these numbers, at least initially that I looked through, some of these bullet points were pulled straight out of the federal code. It's not a bad thing to, to expand it, but anytime we see them, that specific reference to part 200.
Yeah, I think number five, even though it doesn't reference part 200 is, is really very specific to federal awards. A cost can't be assigned to a federal award as a direct cost if any other cost incurred for the same purpose and like circumstances has been allocated as an indirect cost or assigned on another award as an indirect cost. You know, different grants have different rules for direct and indirect grants. And so I, I, I would think we would leave that one.
So then under number four, we could say must conform to any limitations or exclusions as set forth as cost principles in part 200 or in the terms and conditions of a federal award as to the types and amount of cost items. And then, as you referenced, buddy, number five, just kind of leaving that because it already says a federal award.
Could even say any applicable federal word.
Yeah, we have that annoying, in number seven, that annoying gap provision there, and we don't use GAAP. So.
Right.
It's awkward. But it looks like we have to use GAAP for federal projects.
Well, and I'm, I'm wondering, I, I feel like maybe I looked that up beforehand and that the, I'd have to look back at, go dig out that paper copy, but the qualifier comma, unless provided otherwise in part 200, we might, there might be something about government entities not, and I can't remember when I looked into that, but I, but if there's an exception for us, maybe that was pursuant to some of our state reporting stuff last year.
That, that would be good to know just because GAAP requires these special revenue accounts. And we're not using GAAP and we're not using special revenue accounts. So if the feds require us to use special revenue accounts in part 200, then we would have to, for federal funding, create special revenue accounts. I mean, we would basically have to take them off budget.
I just wonder if it's because this came from Pennington County as a sample and Pennington County is full GAAP.
Oh.
And we're not. So there's only two, I think, two counties, two, three maybe, in the state that are full GAAP. So that might've been a Pennington County thing.
Interesting. It'd be useful to know whether the CFR requires GAAP for federal grants.
I wouldn't think that it would because we've been, you know, counties all across the state really have been using federal awards for years. So it kind of makes me think that it's not required, but this might've just been a provision that Pennington County put in there for themselves.
Yeah. So maybe we should highlight that and figure out what the CFR says.
The electrical fridge.
I've been trying to load. It's not loading the CFR for me right now. I was hoping to get an answer for that today.
I highlighted it so we can, yeah, check that out in the meantime.
Yeah.
And number eight, many grants require a what? Non-granting agency match. So that.
Are we changing eight?
It seems like it should be.
I was still making notes and then.
You know, it's, it just, it strikes me that maybe a broader statement would work. And it, you know, something about, you know, grant administrators shall adhere to the grants requirements in terms of direct, indirect costs and matching funds. You know, in, in other words, you know, we signed an agreement saying that, you know, we, we will treat these things a certain way. And we're basically putting it in this, this, this little policy that, yeah, we're going to follow the grant requirements regarding matching funds and cost sharing and indirect, indirect costs. I think we could, we could probably get rid of a lot of the junk.
Might add in allowable, what allowable and allowable or required.
Well, I, I, I was thinking more of like the, you know, accounting part, right? The directed indirect costs, cost sharing and matching requirements.
So you guys just tell me how you want it ordered and I'll type it out.
So we could say the county shall adhere to grant requirements regarding direct and indirect costs, cost sharing and matching requirements.
So then I'm getting rid of everything that was in eight before and replacing it with that sentence.
Correct.
Got it. Now I just got to figure out how to make it renumber correctly because it deleted my number.
Yeah, because I know things like NHS than NIH, they're have different rules.
Pennington County must have added section nine because I can't get number nine to line up either. And I noticed there's some lineup, so. It's not playing nice with me.
And my thought on that is I, it was probably something my asterisk, I didn't understand if it was a big deal and hope someone else would know. And Carrie, you say this makes sense to you. You're good with it. I'm good at that.
Yeah, I guess my thought was just that if we received some sort of a creditor refund, that obviously that would be credited, you know, accordingly back to the grant or paid back to the grant.
So the only thing you think is taken out is the federal spot there where it says federal award, but grant award. First paragraph or first sentence.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, logically speaking, if you're going to have a grant and you've, you've spent some of that grant money and then you get it refunded back, it should go back to the grant balance. So.
Right.
Yeah, it can't go back to the, the county as a whole.
If it's in the first sentence, then the last one.
So I see federal. So we just take out federal.
Right.
Yeah.
It's about three places in there.
And shouldn't it be accruing to or received by the county? I'm trying to figure out.
Oh.
Relate to the award.
This is referring to state rather than county. Yeah. Somehow I don't think, oh, I will leave that alone. Is a state adhering to its own rules?
You may have to repeat that, Phyllis. It looks like they dropped off because it just notified me that I'm the host now. So.
No, it was a comment I was hesitant to make.
Yeah. Yeah, when they get back on, looks like maybe Carrie's starting, trying to get back on now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm really surprised Erickson hasn't fixed that issue yet.
Yeah, this is nasty today.
Yeah, yeah, today's, today's really bad. I don't know what the difference is. I'll look and I'll text her real quick. They might not even know they're off.
Oh.
Yeah, because it's telling me I'm the host again.
Well, it's very nice. Are we having tea and trumpets?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, there it looks like they're back.
Well, hello, guys. How far did you get to the end?
Yeah. Sorry.
So.
You were kind of hoping, weren't you?
We adhere to his policy that we, we incorporate any federal regulations in there. I mean, we would just leave it as is. I'll confess, I have no idea exactly what it means. You know, it refers to. You know, it refers directly to sections that, I mean, I can't imagine any county grant administrator is going to look up.
Which section are you talking about?
Section C, selected items.
Cut off long before you got there.
Oh, we're at the bottom of page nine.
Okay, thank you.
Section C.
Whatever happened to the nine?
It went just ducky.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, so.
We took out the federals there, changed state to county in that second to last line and left it the rest as is.
Moved out.
Thank you.
So now we're at section four, cash management.
Well, I think we also need to change that department directors, the first two words of the second paragraph and C to grant administrators.
Yep.
Yeah. Again, take out the federals.
Not there. It's that part two.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That's right. That's that part 200. That's right.
So the heading is going to be grant programs. Cash management grant programs.
Sounds, sounds good.
And there's one federal in that first paragraph.
Yep, got that one.
Two in the under number one. Or three. And department director or designee. Okay.
The grant administrator or designee. And then change that next federal to a granting agency.
Yeah.
Take out the next federal. Okay, got it.
Got two department directors in number, in the second paragraph. Or designee.
Changing those to grant administrator.
Yep. And then the last sentence in that same paragraph, start of it.
Take out federal in that next section.
Yeah.
The consistent part, you mean?
Yeah.
I don't know. Do we?
Well, under the federal expenses.
Okay, we lost them again, so.
Goodness gracious. It's not that windy. What's going on?
Okay, it looks like they're back now, so. Page 10, number two.
Advances.
We don't get advances, so I don't know if we should leave that in there because it's part of that CFR 200 or if we just take it out.
I would leave it in there. You know, I mean, in, in part because occasionally these things come up and it'd be, you know, I mean, normally people won't even read that paragraph, but.
Maybe be lucky enough to get an advance someday.
Right, be optimistic.
I'll just take the highlighting off of there and probably.
Yeah, yeah, get rid of that. We'll hang on to it for 74, 75 hours.
And then, so then if we're keeping that section, then the last, very last sentence, remittance of interest will be responsibility of the grant administrator. I'm wondering if that needs to be changed because like if Lexi had a grant, she wouldn't be remitting interest. I mean, the, the bank is essentially remitting that to the county. So, and then the county accounting software is dispersing that appropriately.
That, that does disperse that interest where it needs to go?
It does. And if we had a situation where we had a grant in advance like that, we would have to just make sure that that interest is calculated accordingly because that would be kind of an anomaly.
It would, it would just seem like the grant administrator ought to do that. I'm guessing that the rebittance would go to the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
But the grant administrator is going to have to, you know, or maybe you has to do the accounting to make sure it
Right.
returns back to the grant.
Yeah.
The curiosity, the, the most likely that source for anything of this sort would be a private foundation.
Yep.
You know, the removal of federal is, I think, appropriate.
Yeah, I, I know that the Familiar Cultural Association often gets funds in advance and then files reports when they're, they're expended. I mean, that's pretty common for private, private foundations.
I almost think as far as interest, like the treasurer's office receives the interest in when that comes in from the bank. So I wonder if that should say treasurer's office? Or treasurer and auditor?
Well, it's, we'll be in charge of sending it back.
They wouldn't want it back, if the other thing, if it's a private foundation. It would be funded to the agency that received the grant. It's where it gets a bit confusing. Are you still there? No, I don't think so. Oh, goodness gracious. Hello.
There, there, you're unmuted, Phyllis.
Okay. Are they muted still?
No, I'm the host again.
Oh, yeah. Well, you unmuted me. How interesting. This is, I think we should continue another day.
Yep. I think, I think this discussion for today is, is over.
By the way, I love your humor on Facebook. Greatly appreciated.
Okay, it looks like Carrie's the host again.
Okay. I move that we adjourn. Oh, have we done the vouchers?
Yes, she moved to adjourn.
But I asked if we've done, have we approved the voucher?
We're still on this, we're still on the grant policy.
Yeah.
I, I am basically saying, I think we go to another day for further. This is too frustrating.
Well, we have finished the section, so.
Yeah, this was where we were going to stop anyway.
Okay. So you take my recommendation.
Be the nice weather affecting the internet.
I don't know, but it sure is frustrating. Yeah.
Yes, very.
I know Erickson's supposed to be working on it. I guess I'm going to have to see where they're at with that.
Well, it keeps informing me that I'm the host and I don't want to host this.
It's breaking up again.
You're breaking up.
You probably.
Okay, never mind.
It says our internet connection is unstable. Well, duh.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're gone again. Andy's back, though.
Okay, we're doing roll calls for approval of vouchers and payroll. So Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes, Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Do it quick before she leaves again.
Yeah, we've already done the Erickson one, the COVID vaccine refusal personnel policy. Talked to a couple of department heads. They're in agreement with me that if you refuse to take the COVID vaccine, if you were to happen to get COVID then, because currently we're, we're allowing you, we're paying you the two weeks that you have to, or whatever that timeframe is to sit out. If you refuse to get the vaccine, if it's available and you catch COVID, it's, you have to use sick leave or vacation time now.
Sounds fair.
Yes.
So if that's a policy, is that something we need to add to the next meeting? To approve, to, to put in the policy? Or does Karen or Tammy need to?
Over the handbook?
Yeah.
Um, if we're going to do a handbook change, we should, yeah.
Do they need to look at it?
Otherwise, if you're just making it a policy now, then it's already on the agenda, so. Depends if you want it in the handbook, I guess. I don't, I don't know.
I was going to say, did you guys do anything formally when you kind of, I felt like it was more informal of we're going to continue to honor this.
Right.
As long, even though we don't have to, we're going to continue to honor this. And in that sense, I mean, what you're doing is effectively now in a public meeting, you know, within the minutes, identifying change in, in practice because of that.
So we're going to treat this just like if you've gotten the flu then.
Right.
So I mean, it's going to be, if you're sick, you use sick leave or vacation time.
So then, you know, from my perspective, that's just a matter of us delivering that message as department heads, like the commissioners have identified now they're, they're changing practice because you're going to be eligible, everybody for COVID vaccines. And, and so we can run it by Karen and see if she thinks we need to update our manual, but otherwise, I mean, I think the practice you were doing was going to say, hey, we're going to disregard the, the manual for now in the interest of our current circumstances. And now you're saying, eh, circumstances have changed again. We're going back to the policy handbook is kind of mine.
I agree. I don't know that it needs to be in the personnel manual.
Yeah, the, the one issue, the one issue is the past practice issue, which is kind of a, you know, I'll put that in quotes, right? You know, I was a chief labor negotiator while I worked for the city in Connecticut. And once you've established a past practice, you have to give notice to employees that you change it. And so I would suggest that that be very, very formal. And I guess my only other question is whether employees now have all been vaccinated or had access to vaccinations or no.
They will in a short timeframe here.
Yeah, so we should change the policy after, you know, it becomes possible.
Yeah, well.
So they.
Well, some have had it and some have turned it down already. So we need to address those people who've already turned it down.
So like law enforcement has had access to it. We got access via law enforcement. And then we have, and then the, the same thing of where we had to submit names, we were contacted through Sanford for Distribution so that then when E comes up, so we are on D, when E comes up and is eligible, their name is updated so they can, when they get notice, hey, you can sign up now. You can go to your one chart or you can call up and they'll have documentation. And that's the same thing. There was a spreadsheet of information that then the county submits to say once one E goes active, these people are all eligible for, for vaccination. So I, I think we are collecting that information. I just don't think it's been hit yet.
Yeah, we, we've got a HIPAA, do we have a HIPAA problem?
Lane had a comment.
The HIPAA thing is, I don't think we do because it's going to be that person's choice. The problem rely, to me, comes in, if we do this for COVID for very specific reasons, do we also do it for flu shots?
Correct. That crossed my.
You're frozen again.
Yeah.
So we're not hearing anything.
So Lena, we can't hear you. So I'm going to jump in and just give some rudimentary. I know there are companies right now, this has been an HR discussion of whether or not an employee, you have a right to that information. And definitely like within healthcare industry, I know that has come out absolutely because that's part of their policies and criteria. And they need to know in order to, to be able to deliver services, whether or not you are going to expose other people. And I think where I would go with that is when you guys did the situation where you say, hey, we're going to go with this more expensive health insurance policy and, but in order to make it, make the employee not feel the difference, you're going to have a bigger deductible, but we'll pay the first 1,500 of your 3,000, or if you go over 1,500, we'll pay the next 1,500 so you don't feel the difference. So it's going to be a $3,000 deductible, but we're going to pay that. But in order to do that, you've got to be willing then to tell us and, and make some of that information available. If you don't want to do that, you don't have to do that. But then you're not going to be given the benefit, if that makes sense. So that's kind of how I view this of, I think the practice would be, we're going to go back to, you got to use sick leave and vacation when you've, when you're ill or have an exposure or any of those types of things, communicate that to your department head. If you want an exception, and I don't know how that works, but that would be more of a situation where somebody's chosen to get the vaccine.
What do we do with the people who've gotten the vaccine and still get?
I was just going to ask that.
That, to me, that's your dilemma. I think you're just saying, hey, once the vaccine's available, we may not have to ask the question, but then it's on you to have gone and gotten it.
Or do we just go back to, this is a policy, if you get sick? We're in that middle ground where people who aren't, it's not available to some, they can still catch it. I think we should still go forward with the practice we've been doing for those people, the ones who could have gotten it and refused it and get sick. I think that's a different scenario.
Do we have access, do we, do we rightfully have access to that information about whether somebody refused the vaccine or got the vaccine? I mean, that's, that's really central to this.
Nobody's keeping it secret anymore on the department heads or the departments right now, so.
Somebody could, somebody could get COVID and say, well, no, I had the vaccine. That's, you know, I mean, I.
I know what you're saying, but I think at that time, I'd want to have them, they give you a card when you get the shot.
We're going to need a note from the doctor.
Well, pretty much.
Can we require a doctor's note? I think we can.
You can require it.
Can we?
Yes, you can require a note from the doctors. What would be the difference?
Here's what I think. I think it's a, that to a certain extent, we're over complicating this because I think what we're talking about is when are we, are you going to do something different? Once the vaccine is widely available, right? So let's use the flu as an example. We don't have special policy criterias for when somebody gets the flu. You, you take your sick leave. And after you've had, I think it's three days, you, if you're going to be gone longer than that, you got to bring a doctor's note in order to continue to use sick leave. And so I think that's what our policy says. The question is, is once the vaccine is widely available, I mean, I don't really know that we care whether you've gotten the vaccine or not. The issue is, is you got to be homesick. Take your sick leave. You're going to have to use sick leave. You cannot come to work if you're sick, whether you have COVID, whether they have strep throat, I mean, whatever that might be, until you're cleared medically from that, from your doctor. And then are you guys going to give additional sick leave to somebody who's gotten COVID after they got the vaccine? And that probably is the policy handbook because now you're taking a specific condition and granting additional leave.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're right, that it just needs to be simple. Because otherwise, I think we open ourselves up to, you know, lawsuits and, and so on. It, 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 it just has to be simple.
So like devil's advocate, somebody thinks they have allergies and they come to work and really it turns out they had COVID, whether they had the vaccine or not. I mean, can we say in our personnel manual, if you're not 100%, you can't come to work? I mean, we, we don't, we don't do that.
People come to work with cold or the flu all the time.
Yeah.
We don't send them home.
Right, but I'm saying, I, I do think some of that practice has changed. And I, and I'm going to use myself as an example for this. I mean, it used to be like, I remember, probably shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna, I mean, court had to be done. I had responsibilities. And I was on the verge, I mean, I had a, I had a trash can sitting. I remember, probably shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna, I mean, court had to be done, I had responsibilities, and I was on the verge, I mean, I had a, I had a trash can sitting next to me in that courtroom in case I couldn't make it out the door, cuz I felt like crap, so, not gonna do that anymore. We are all gonna have to figure out how court is gonna get covered, or continuances are gonna be made, and I think everybody in the system is gonna be more accommodating to that, because if you're not feeling well, I mean, that's part of it, is do you have a fever, are you, I mean, not symptomatic of that, where you really shouldn't be at work, and I think.
You're gone again.
Okay, it looks like they're back now. Uh, but they're muted. Carrie, you're muted.
I'm working on it.
Yeah, so forty percent of cases are asymptomatic, and I, I, I think the, the point for me is that, you know, uh, there, there are places where employers can't go, and we wanna really steer clear of those places. And when we make policy, we can't make policy in those areas where employers can't go, like, we can't, we can't monitor our employees' health or, you know, I mean, if, if, if we have a, a long-term policy in our handbook that says, um, if you're gonna be out more than three days, you need a doctor's note, well, okay, that's a, that, that's past practice, that's longstanding policy, um, you know, it doesn't violate HIPAA, it's time-tested, it's court-tested, but, uh, you know, I, I, I just don't think that we can demand to see vaccine cards before we hand out sick time.
Well, and that part, though, I do think is, I mean, vaccine cards are gonna become mandatory in order, as I've been told, to get into trainings, to get on flights, to, to go to different countries, I'm wondering if we should just ask Karen to weigh in on this, because.
Which is fine.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Cuz Phyllis has missed most of this also, and so has Lane.
Lane and I are having fun out here, I don't know what you're doing.
If I can weigh in just.
Hey, it's the same, Phyllis. It is the same.
If I can weigh in just a second, something that's really going to, you know, that throws the stick in the wheel here, is that the vaccine does not prevent you from getting it.
Correct.
It is intended to make it less severe when you do. So, you know, in the long run, we're still gonna have to social distance, we're still gonna have to have masks, all of that for a foreseeable distant time, so, you know, it's, and, I don't know if you've seen the chat, but when you guys were froze once, Phyllis and I talked about it, but you're right, do we make this for?
Yeah, you're breaking up again.
Yeah, that's your guys' bandwidth, um, yeah, we'll have to continue this some other time.
Save the thought for next week.
Yeah.
We're, we're losing you.
Elaine, if you'd speak without your video on, it'd probably use less bandwidth.
It's on their end, though, Andy.
It's gonna let that picture of herself.
Yeah, it's down in the room, it's an Erickson thing, so.
Yeah. Did we go with this accord?
Um, Erickson's was supposed to be working on figuring out the best solution, and I haven't had an update from them, so I need to see what they're doing.
Can you get ahold of Karen and just ask her, Tammy?
Yeah.
Who we're supposed to, or what we're supposed to do, or how we can do it.
And then should I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Oh, we have one more thing?
Yeah, we, we added the open meeting policy.
Oh, yeah.
So the, so last night we ran into a problem, um, three of us were gonna be on that meeting last night, and that, we can't have that, so we have to, I think we're gonna have to figure out who's gonna be on the meeting, and then Carrie, you just send those credentials to those two people.
Okay, or, this might open up a can of worms, too, facility committee is meeting the next three Thursdays.
Yep.
Do, do you guys want me to just post it as an open meeting, and I guess if people want to attend, they can zoom in, I mean, there'll be Zoom meetings, so.
I think they ought to be open meetings at this point, I mean, I, 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 I don't see the point in not having an open meeting, um, especially since we need information.
They've always been open, I've.
You're gone again.
Well, I'm gonna drop off, Phyllis, let me know if you said anything fun.
It's been a lovely evening, I mean, take it. Now I'm the host for nobody, wonderful.
Phyllis, me and you are the Lone Rangers.
Oh, you're on here too, huh?
I'm still here, I'm hanging on with ya.
Oh, Lord, this is more than frustrating, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, this is the first time I've done the Zoom, so I haven't experienced this, I usually go downstairs.
We might have one or two breaks, but this constant is bad. It's ridiculous. Don't know what's causing it, but it is on their end, or in the room.
Yeah, it is, cuz I mean, I'm even in the courthouse, I'm just on the second floor, and it's working for me.
I don't know if we just leave, oh, Eric, Carrie may be coming now, she's hosting again, maybe? Or thought she was. Carrie Auditor is now hosting, yes? No, yes? Hello, you're muted, I can see you move, but you're still muted for the.
Here.
There you go.
Okay.
The only thing I would say about recording is, I think everybody is really clear that recording was just for commissioner meetings.
That's a special meeting, it's a commission meeting.
It would be, yeah.
That's why.
And I mean, I could, I could still record it, it's just not gonna be in this room, you know?
What are you talking about?
Open meeting, so we don't, uh, have three people at a meeting.
Correct.
It almost occurred last night.
Or so we posted.
Well, I assumed it might happen, that's why I didn't even show up, but I also had a concert to go to, but. I think they should be either published or decide who's going.
Yeah. I think we should decide who's going, so we know.
So do I, cuz I think it'll be easier.
You know, my only reservation about that is, um, that already there's this buzz about secrecy, um, and, um, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sensitive to that.
People can still come, though, I mean, we're not preventing the public from coming, cuz that's already still on the website, okay? So it's just, it's just preventing a forum of commissioners.
And I, and I think, I think today that, that they realize that we're not hiding anything. I think the people that were here today saw that we're not hiding anything.
They get it.
We just didn't have the numbers, and those are the people that, that have actually probably put a lot as much buzz out there as anything.
We didn't have any numbers until May.
Right.
And by May, we couldn't have any public meetings anyway, because with COVID, you just couldn't do that, so.
Yeah, I didn't, I forgot about that, cuz those are Zoom meetings.
Yeah, we didn't have anything until May.
No. Well, I'll bow out of all three meetings, I'm fine with that, so there's one person off.
Well, I have to be there because I'm the contact person.
Right, that's fine.
The engineer, architect, or consultant.
And I, I have gone to many of the past meetings, I, are you gone again? No, forget it. Hi, Sam.
Hi, I can still see them, so I'm not quite sure.
Oh, they're gone now, even from seeing for me.
Oh, I can, oh, yeah, there they go.
And I'm hosting again, oh.
Lucky you, don't drop off, I don't wanna host.
I was coming into the lane that we were going to have tea and crumpets in the moment. What else? Oh. This is the worst it's ever been. Hmm. Lordy, lordy. So, know any good songs? Oh.
I don't know, it still says recording, so I don't think I'm gonna start breaking out the singing voice.
That's true. Be very rude to the public that watch.
Yeah, I, I would burst some eardrums for sure.
And if this is still recording, we are talking because, oh, we're waiting for the rest of the people to come back on. And they sort of on.
Can you hear us?
Yes, yes. This is more than frustrating, I.
Anybody have anything else for this meeting? Phyllis, you wanna adjourn us?
Gladly, yeah.
I've got a motion.
A motion to adjourn.
Um, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith, yes, Packard.
Yes.
Packler.
Yes, meeting adjourned. That's gonna be a fun one to watch on YouTube.
Ouch.